Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, good. I'm going to call this very strange meeting of the Loma Linda City Council to order, and we'll begin with our roll call.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Duper.
Present. Hey Barbara, you're really faint, we can barely hear you.
Okay.
You gotta take off your mask.
Oh, okay.
She's going to infect everybody now.
There we go.
If she has a mask on, she'll be okay.
They just took it off.
Oh.
So you can hear her.
She can hear me.
Barely.
Mayor Pro Tempore Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Rixby.
Here.
We have a forum, thank you.
Okay, we had no closed session, and we will begin as usual with our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by me. Let's bow our head. Dear Lord, we thank you for your leadership of our city, our people, the institutions here, the businesses, the visitors, the patients. We ask that you help us in this organizational meeting to set the tone for the next two years of our city council, and to do the best we can within our abilities to lead your city and your people. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, how are we getting the flag? We need...
Dooper have a flag.
Okay, well, we'll pledge allegiance to Phil's background. Okay, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any items to be added or deleted? Okay, none. Now, we may have some issues with our electronics on oral reports from the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any non-agendized item? And if there are, how will we know?
If you wish to speak this time and you're a phone participant, please press star nine to raise your hand. If you are using a computer, iPad, PC, or phone, use the digital, you can use the text box and just chat, say you wish to speak. And I currently have two people that are on the agenda. Just give me one moment, let me get them pulled up. Leilani, I have you slated to speak. I'm having difficulties finding you the list, if you can press star nine if you're conducted via phone. Let's, Laura Muro, let me pull her up right now. Okay Laura, you're now unmuted.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, your video is on as well.
Okay. Um, so, thank you member, the city council members for still participating in the meetings, even though I know this is probably difficult and hard for everybody at this time, so. I did attend last month's city council meeting, which I did bring up in regards to the sound wall for Caltrans. And I appreciate Jarb getting back with me within at least five days of that, finding out that there was no phones for that. However, my concern is still the safety issue, and so this is why I'm still staying with you guys. And I'm pleading with the US City Council members. I recently found out that the land that the Alto Camino Mobile Home Estates is on is owned by Loma Linda University. So, my plea to you guys is this. Based on the last meeting, we are about 25 feet away, and there is another neighbor that is joining us in on that meeting, that was the first recipient that you had called, which was Leilani. She is also attending this meeting with me to let you guys know that it is a is a liability for us to be unprotected 25 feet away from the freeway. So, there is a perimeter wall that we have that is just chain link fence. It is about 15 years old, it has holes and patches on it. And I'm, we are, we are told by our management company that you are only allowed in the parameters of our home to put a four feet chain link fence. However, the responsibility that's bears from the property management should be to protect the residents on that side. So I'm asking for the city's help to put pressure on the Mobile Home Estates, Alto Camino Mobile Home Estates, to put up a perimeter wall until I can move this with Caltrans. I've already contacted Caltrans, I have someone working on the sound part of it, but my biggest concern is, is that there still is a perimeter wall that could secure us properly if the management company is held responsible for that.
Okay. Thank you for that, we, under the rules of engagement, cannot necessarily respond, but we will direct your concerns to the staff, and we will take to heart what you've said.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm just asking for the higher ups to get involved with the residents that are not having any power in keeping themselves safe.
We hear you. We share your concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you.
We appreciate you, thank you so much.
Okay, we have another speaker.
Okay, Leilani, I will now unmute you, and I'm gonna request a video if you wish to share a video as well.
You're on.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I, for some reason, don't see video, am I being heard?
Yes, I can hear you and see you.
Perfect, thank you very much. Thank you Laura for coming on and speaking on behalf of our community. As Laura shared, this is a safety concern. When I first bought this home, it was a sound concern for me because I have spent over six months battling sleep due to the sound of this wall not being up. And I would have never purchased this home six months ago had not been told by not only the builder of my home, manufacturer Paramount, business seller, home manufactured by Golden West, and being told by Alto Camino that this would eventually be a sound wall. We haven't only been told this, we've been given dates. I mean, this is a situation that now I fear my safety, as Laura said, because having shared with several of my neighbors, there's been tires that have flown off the freeway and gone through these mobile homes. There was just two days ago when I went outside to water my plants, a coyote that came through my hole in my chain link fence. A neighbor's dog has been taken by coyotes. There are so many reasons why this shouldn't just be a concern of Loma Linda's. This should be an absolute priority. This is Loma Linda land, monitored or managed by Alto Camino Mobile Estates. There is no reason why homes that are this close to a freeway should not be protected by something other than a 15-year-old chain link fence with holes bent over by trees that are torn down because of termites. I mean, I would encourage anyone from the city council to come and see the conditions of this. Now, we just had a widening of this off-ramp, which is Mountain, that we live against. Because this is such a high traffic, it could exit by semis. Prime, Amazon, several other semi companies that go here off of Mountain that have obviously large buildings where they're delivering things, so we have semis constantly coming by our homes. And I'm a little farther away from the freeway chain link fence than Laura is, but these semis actually rattle these homes when they go by. So it is my plea and my absolute basically begging of the city, since this is your land, I would hate for a tragic tragedy to happen from this freeway, from flying tires, from debris, from several accidents that I've seen right in my own backyard, basically, happen. That it would have to come down to a tragedy happening for something to come up, designs a chain link fence. And if a wall, not a sound wall, but a brick wall like we have on the other three perimeters of this property could go up until, as Laura mentioned, we can get together with Caltrans and get a sound wall up for the sound purposes, something for our safety. That is the purpose of me attending this meeting and Laura attending this meeting. Please take into consideration the safety of this park and the fact that all that separates us from the 10 freeway is a chain link fence. Please.
You're... Thank you for that. We will, as with the other comment, will refer that to our city staff, and we will look into it ourselves. And it's, it's an issue that needs some attention, and we can't say much more about it at this time, but thank you for your comments, we appreciate that. Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, is it, are you coming across, are you muted, or? Okay, do you guys hear her?
Barbara, you sound like you're just really far away.
Okay, is that better?
Better.
Okay, okay, I was unmuted, thank you. Via email. Dear Loma Linda members of the council and viewing audience, on behalf of the Tachana Latino Caucus of San Bernardino County, we congratulate Loma Linda's Bavin Gendal and to the members who were reelected. It is with no doubt that Mr. Gendal will help move the city forward and attend the needs of its constituents. Looking forward to working with the mayor and council members. Let's get to work, Anna Gonzalez, President. Thank you.
Public. Hearing none, then we will move forward to our first agenda item, which is the March 3, 2020 election results. We have Council Bill R-2020-09 confirming the March 3, 2020 election results, and comments to follow.
I'll move it.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Okay, there's a second.
Daley is second.
Motion by Popescu, second by Daley, to pass Council Bill R-2020-09. Do we, I think the city attorney said we have to do all of our votes by roll call when we're doing an electronic meeting, so we will ask the clerk to conduct a roll call. Answer with yes or aye, or no. She's having trouble unmuting, so. One moment, please, please stand by.
Okay, thank you. The motion is to adopt Council Bill R-2020-09 confirming the March 3, 2020 election results. When I call your name, please vote yea or nay. Mayor Rixby?
Yea.
Mayor Pro Tempore Leonard?
Yea.
Councilman Popescu?
Yes.
Councilman Duper?
Yes.
Councilman Daley?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and now 1B, remarks from departing councilmen. Mr. Popescu, the time is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Rixby. As you can tell, I've got a background of the hills, I'm not in the hills, I have my own home, but I just thought it would be a little bit funner to show the outside, which we all really appreciate now more than ever. But I'll be kind of short and sweet, I'll just make a few comments. I want to start off by thanking the many volunteers who helped us in this campaign and walked the streets for us and helped us put up signs and helped with mailers. We had about 30 different individuals helping at different times. Obviously, our families and friends who were involved, and we want to shout out a special thank you to Evy Roach, who was our star volunteer. The lady was amazing, she helped us with signs, talking to people. I think she, single-handedly, probably wrote about a couple thousand envelopes, so it's, anyway, we want to really thank her and appreciate her efforts. Mayor Rixby and Mayor Pro Temp Leonard and I felt like we ran a very good campaign and actually had quite a bit of fun doing it. Despite being outspent close to 20 to 1, I'm very happy to see that Mayor Rixby and Dr. Leonard got reelected. I think had the ballots been a little more clear, I might have had a different speech tonight, but I, it might have stayed the same as well. For those of you who know me, I've been involved in the city for about 15 years, even though I've lived here for 40 years. I was motivated to run back in 2006 based on the fact that our town at that time was being overdeveloped. This is during their last housing boom, with a lot of high-density housing. And I wanted to make sure we protected our hills and have a council that would work in a more fair manner with Loma Linda University. So thus I ran and was successful the second time, and actually was involved in recruiting every single one of the veteran council members that are here tonight. I've been very blessed to serve on this council and grateful for my time here. I've learned a great deal about many different subjects and obviously how the government works, and I've made some amazing friends. I've accomplished many things that I don't need to go into details about, but I just wanted to emphasize the one area that I actually enjoyed the most, which was serving on the Inland Valley Development Agency Board and the San Bernardino International Airport Board. As a result of my time there, I really fell in love with aviation and understood more how important that airport was for our area, and was proud of the many accomplishments that we accomplished at the San Bernardino International Airport. Able to get an airline while I was there, I still believe that that's gonna happen, but it's probably gonna be delayed even more now than ever. But in the meantime, you know, we created thousands of jobs from the various businesses that started in the area, and just recently approved a large logistics aviation project that will create 4,000 more jobs. I truly believe, given what's going on in the world right now and the coronavirus, that our economy is gonna take a big hit. And there are those who oppose many of those jobs at the airport, and they're gonna quickly learn that those jobs are gonna be more important now than ever. A key to our economic survival is for that airport to be functioning and full of vibrant activity. I'm confident that I'm leaving the city in a very good shape and very stable hands at its helm. We have a very solid group of veteran council members that will help us weather the incoming economic storm. When I came on board, we were dealing with the recession. We survived that based on a lot of good decision-making, and I really think that this council will do the same. Wanted to make one important point. 12 years ago, big money and outside groups really controlled our city council. The citizens rose up and we stopped that process and produced the present council that we have today. In this election, it was clear that once again, big money and outside interests are getting involved in our city. This should be a big warning sign that those forces who want to take the city in a different direction could lead us to higher taxes and high-density housing, so just be forewarned. I think moving forward, the city should make sure we follow our general plan that we approved some time ago, and really resist high-density housing. The type of high-density housing that has been a magnet for the proliferation of viruses, that's where most people are getting sick, where they live in high-density housing. I want to make sure that we continue to follow Measure V, and I think all of you will. I'm not too concerned about any major development coming up soon, because I think the economy is gonna kind of do that on its own. I'm hopeful that this council will continue to work very closely with Loma Linda University, our largest employer and healthcare provider. They're gonna need our assistance more than ever. And in anticipation of a slowing economy, I think we must keep our budget lean and fiscally sound. I think if we follow those basic guidelines, which we have for the last 12 years, I think our city will prosper once again. With that, I bid you a good night and hope you guys all continue to have fun, thank you.
Enjoyed working with you, Obi. Stand vault.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Yep, I'm sure you'll still be involved with a lot of phone calls.
Well, hopefully we'll get back to actually going into the chambers rather than having this virtual type of meeting.
Yes.
Well, thank you all, I'll let you continue with your meeting at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Obi.
Thank you for your comments. Our next item is the oath of allegiance for the city councilman-elect. Adam Clerk.
Councilmembers Gendal, Leonard, and Rixby, do you solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purposes of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Councilman Gendal?
I do.
Councilman Leonard?
I do.
Councilman Rixby?
I do.
Thank you. Each of the councilmen-elect have previously signed their oath of office and have been presented with their certificate of election. Thank you.
Okay, the presentation of certificates of election have already been made, so now we will seat our councilman metaphorically and invite him to make some remarks. So, let's start with the highest vote getter, we'll go with Dr. Leonard.
Hello, everybody. Didn't have any formal speech prepared or anything, but I would like to welcome our newest member of the city council. Looking forward to working with you, and also say goodbye to Mr. Popescu. I enjoyed the last eight years working with him. We all had a good working relationship, and I'm sure that all five of us coming on here will continue with our collegial relationship and be able to do very good things for the city of Loma Linda.
Okay. Next, we'll have Councilman Gendal.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank all the residents of Loma Linda for helping me and entrusting me to serve our community and our residents. I am humbled to represent your values, and I look forward to working with you as well as our city staff to achieve the full potential of our city. I would like to congratulate Mr. Uribe and Mr. Popescu on their campaign. Mr. Popescu has achieved a great deal in his 12 years of service to the city, and I applaud that. I would also like to congratulate Doctors Leonard and Rixby, whom I now have the pleasure of serving with on this council. For those of you whom I have not yet met, my name is Bavin Gendal. I obtained my bachelor's in economics and government from Claremont McKenna College. From the time that I was a student, I was drawn to the potential of local government. I am passionate about serving our residents and ensuring that all voices are heard. More so, I am thrilled that I get to serve in such a position in a city that I and my family love so dearly. From the time we moved to this area, my parents were drawn to the allure of Loma Linda. It is a city beaming with culture and heart. It has a rich history and historic charm. Aside from the fact that our residents have mastered longevity, our residents are some of the most generous and kind-hearted people I have ever met. They are what make the city truly special. As I am sure we can all attest, running a campaign is not easy, but it is one of the most rewarding experiences I have ever had. I set out to run for this position because I saw opportunity for our city. It's an opportunity to truly live up to our Blue Zone status. I'm excited to bring new ideas to the table and work with our fellow council members. We are in an unprecedented time with this public health crisis. I know that many people are stuck in limbo, given the uncertainty of this pandemic. From what I have seen in the last few days, I am proud of our city staff for working hard to ensure that our city is running smoothly with our city manager and assistant city manager at the helm. I would also like to thank our firefighters, our police officers, and those who are on the front lines of this crisis. We will get through this as a city because we have hope, perseverance, and above all, faith. Finally, I would like to thank my friends and community members who were there for me through the course of the campaign. We did not start with much, but this was truly a grassroots campaign, and I am proud of the campaign that we built along the way. I would like to thank my mother and brother for standing by my side and working hard to go door-to-door and having conversations with residents. And finally, my father passed away less than a year ago. I wish he was here in this room with me today, but I know that he is watching me, and it is with his blessing that I set out to make a positive impact on the city that we call home. Thank you all.
Thank you for that, and now I'll have some brief comments. I congratulate the new councilman, Mr. Gendal. Thank you for your passion for our city and for your collegial campaign, appreciate that. I thank, first, the citizens of Loma Linda for participating in the process of electing their representatives. And I am humbled to be allowed once again to have a term of office, and I hope that I can live up to the trust that they've given to me. I thank the volunteers that we have. I thank the volunteers that we have on our campaign. And like Ovi said, if it weren't for Evy Roach, the campaign would have had a lot of low points. And she is an angel. And she offers both her efforts and her prayers and we really appreciate that. I don't have a whole lot to say about what's going forward because none of us knows what will happen. I believe that this epidemic, this pandemic, will be followed by years of struggle financially, both for the city and for the citizens and for our country. And I pray for the recovery of our health and as well as our economy. And I'll say what I said when I was first elected 14 years ago, which is that my goal in deciding issues on this council is to have slightly less than half of the citizens disagree with what I've done. It's a very tough thing to decide issues that are controversial and we can't please everybody. And those who think they can haven't had much experience in local politics. But I hope that I can serve the citizens well. And once again, I thank them for entrusting me. All of the other volunteers to our campaign, from members of the fire department to family members, to friends and associates, and members of the Redlands Tea Party who helped out quite a bit, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. We had a successful campaign. And my condolences to Mr. Popescu, who has been my best friend in politics for the last 12 years, 14 years. And I wish him well and I'll see a lot of him. He comes over for spaghetti to my house for lunch and I look forward to those lunches. So with that, I think we will proceed to the reorganization. And this may very well be the last few words that I speak as mayor. But I really appreciated the trust that the city council has placed in me as mayor for the last 10 years and the citizens as well. It's been an honor to serve, a lot of high points, a lot of fun times. And whoever is elected mayor going forward, I wish them the best. And I will be presenting them when they come back to the council chambers with our special mallet that wraps the council to attention and with a sign that will be in front of their seat on the council. So whoever it is, this is yours. And now I will turn the election over to the city clerk to conduct the process as she deems fit.
Nomination is now in order for the office of mayor.
I would like to-
Can't hear you, Barbara.
Nominations are now in order for the office of mayor.
I would like to, Madam Clerk nominate Phil Duper. I'll second the motion.
Phil Duper has been nominated for mayor. Are there any other nominations?
I think, I'd like to say that I would like to thank Mayor Riggsby for his dedicated service. He's been doing a very good job as mayor. It's been nice having him to do that. We have a new face on the city council, so maybe that is time for somebody new. I think the council members, all of us that are Duper, Daley, myself, all did a fine job. I think that any one of us could do it and would be doing well. I'd be ready to serve if it were to work out that way. It looks like it is not gonna be that way, but I'd be happy to. But we can go ahead and go on and have a vote. But I would just like to express my confidence in all members of the council that it's a good group to work with.
Hearing those are nominations, is there a motion and a second to close the nominations? As there's only one nomination, the motion may include an instruction to the clerk to post- excuse me, to cast a unanimous ballot for Councilman Duper as mayor. Do you hear a motion?
I don't move. I'll second.
Okay, spin a motion and a second to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Phil Duper as mayor. As I call your name, please vote yea or nay. Councilman Daley?
Yea.
Councilman Duper?
Yea.
Councilman Gendal?
Yea.
Councilman Leonard?
Yea.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yea.
Thank you very much. The motion passes unanimously. The nominations are closed and the city clerk has been instructed to cast a unanimous ballot for the nominee Phil Duper. He is now elected mayor and I will turn the balance of the meeting over to Mayor Duper.
Phil, I want to congratulate you. You'll do, you'll take the job seriously and do it well. And at the same time, I want to add my support for comments that have already been made and appreciation for your hard work and leadership, Dusty, for as mayor for the last 10 years. So job well done.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Duper will do a fantastic job. So congratulations and I think that's a wonderful thing.
I gotta tell you that I am very, very proud to work with you guys and I think Dr. Riggsby has done a phenomenal job for the last 10 years. And it, you know, I feel like we kind of just got to that point where we kind of had to move some things around, but he's been the face of our city for a long time and will continue to be so, both formally and informally, because people just know and respect him and he is the guy that's always been there. So thank you very much, Dusty, for your service and what you have done for us, getting us to where we're at. As we mentioned earlier, you and Ovi and some of us on the tail end, you got us past the financial trouble and really kind of established where we're at as a city now. We're gonna have to rely heavily on what you did to get us here because I agree, moving forward, we are in some definitely tough times. And we already have to figure out how to try to balance some of this stuff as we come out of it. So we're just hoping you do. So anyway, thank you very much, all of you. I will now entertain nominations for the position of mayor pro tempore.
I would like to nominate Councilman Daley.
Okay, nomination for Councilman Daley.
Second.
And a second?
Yes.
From Dr. Leonard?
Yep.
I would also like to nominate former Mayor Riggsby for that position just to see if we have any discussion about that. I think he's done a great job in representing and attending events and being that voice. So if anybody's interested in that, I'll throw that out there just for discussion. Okay, so we have a first and a second for Councilman Daley. Madam Clerk, do we do the same procedure we just did?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion. Well, do you take this part over?
It's all yours.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations.
I move it.
Okay, first from Dr. Leonard.
Second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gendal. Madam Clerk, you may proceed.
Okay. Thank you. I'll now call the role for the office of mayor pro tempore. We have nominated, my understanding-
Dr. Daley.
Dr. Daley, my apologies. Mayor Duper? Please say yea or nay.
Yea.
Councilman Gendal?
Yea.
Councilman Leonard?
Yea, if he promises to keep the meetings moving while he chairs him.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yea.
And Councilman Daley?
Yea.
Thank you. And by unanimous vote, Councilman Daley is now the mayor pro tempore. Thank you.
Cool.
Okay, moving on to our committee appointments. Does anybody have any preference or any comments on what they might be interested in doing before we get started? I can tell you that I think most of us have served in some long-term capacity on the various committees that we've been on. And especially right now, my opinion is we should probably maintain some type of consistency with that. My personal preference would be to move the mayor into the primary position on the airport, or I'm sorry, Councilman Riggsby into the primary position on the airport where he's been serving as the alternate. And then I've been serving as the alternate on the IVDA. So I would be willing to serve as the member again with Councilman Riggsby on the IVDA if we also choose.
Mayor Duper, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
As we talked a couple of years ago, I said that I thought the mayor should have the ability to choose what positions they feel like they need to be on there to be effective for the city. So are there any positions that you feel, other than the one you just mentioned, that you feel that you need to be on and would like to be on that would help you in your capacity as mayor?
You know, I have a great faith in all of us that we all act as a body and there's no individual intention here to do anything. And so I'm comfortable in anybody on this board representing us at any of these boards. I appreciate that and I know traditionally, some of these boards have been represented by the quote-unquote mayor. But I also know we've got a lot of experience here in various places that I would hate to lose that experience regionally. You know, and specifically speaking to like Dr. Daley, his value in Omni Transit is huge, especially right now. And Dr. Riggsby being on SBCTA and he knows that place in and out. So I'm open to hear nominations or ideas if anybody would like to switch some things up.
Well, we have a new councilman and I'd like to give him the opportunity to express any specific interests he may have.
Okay.
And then we can go from there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor. I personally am interested in the IVDA and San Bernardino International Airport. I've been to meetings for the San Bernardino Airport. It's very personal to me. I grew up very close to the airport and we would go there for cross-country practice. I'm familiar with the development that is going on in that area. And like I said, it's just very personal to me that we do a good job in not only attracting quality jobs to our region, but also making sure that we properly develop it and make sure it benefits the whole community.
Can I ask you a question? Are you still working for Amazon?
I am.
Okay, but my only concern with that, you potentially would be conflicted from a lot of discussion and decisions related to the airport and the IVDA because of Amazon's big front there in the area. So that may not give us as much of a voice as a city with you potentially in that position. So that would be my concern.
We have three positions on the IVDA. We have the two primary members and one alternate. So with Mayor Duper moving up to the primary position, there is an opening for an alternate on the IVDA.
Any other thoughts or concerns?
I'd be glad to give up my solid waste management board and water district seats. My, every year I try to pass that along.
Well, traditionally, it's always been the last one in, starts out with those two committees.
So I'm suggesting that, yeah.
So if we continue with tradition, those would be given to Mr. Gendal. And that's the way it worked for me and Bronn when we first got on and then we passed him along to you, Dr. Leonard. Haven't had much movement since then, so.
Yeah, I'd be glad to hand those over if you guys want to.
Yeah, Dr. Leonard has been handling solid waste for eight solid years now. And that's a yeoman's task.
Do we have an alternative recommendation for the SBCTA as well? That's another one I would be interested in.
Well, currently, who is serving as the alternate? Is it Mayor Duper? Daley.
Daley. And-
How do you guys feel about that?
Yeah, no, I would, I'd be willing to give that up. You just need to be aware. I don't think I've ever represented Dusty on that, even though I've been your loyal lieutenant for a long time. So I can't promise you it'll be a very busy assignment.
Yeah, I'm a pretty faithful attendee. I usually even plan my vacations around it.
Well, should we just take them one at a time for the SBCTA? Do we have a formal nomination?
I think in the past, we've been fairly informal about it, kind of consensus-driven unless there's a lot of dispute.
So, so Dr. Riggsby continuing on that?
So Riggsby continues and Gendal can become the alternate, as far as I'm concerned, unless we hadn't asked John if he had anything else on here he was interested in. I know you've got a tougher schedule than some of the rest of us.
Well, I wouldn't mind that or the Omni Transit or something. I guess it depends if Mr. Gendal is going to take the waste management and the water, then I'm free to do something else, but I'm okay with whatever anybody wants.
Do we have an alternate on Omni Transit?
Yeah, alternate on Omni Transit was Ovi.
Okay, so we need to replace that.
I'll take that out of my mind.
Okay.
Okay, so if I can move for SBCTA that we keep the current delegate, Mayor Riggsby, alternate Councilman Gendal, and then for Omni Transit, current delegate would be Councilman Daley and alternate would be Councilman Leonard.
Okay. For the IVDA and SBIAA, again, my thought was to move the mayor into the airport position. I would probably be interested in serving as the alternate to that. And my thought would be to keep both of us on the IVDA since we've consistently been on those two boards for quite some time now. But as an alternate on to IVDA, what's everybody's thoughts on that? I would actually suggest Dr. Leonard be part of that.
I wouldn't mind that.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Yeah.
It's- Yes, I think, fine with me.
Yep, was that wrong? Was that a yes?
It's okay with me. Does the alternate attend all those meetings or is available when somebody else can't?
In the practice, just when somebody else can't.
Okay.
But the IVDA and the airport authority, they have officially allowed alternates to attend and be paid the honorary- paid the honorarium for their attendance, even if they were not a voting member at the time of the meeting.
Wow, it wasn't that way when I was on there. Let me just say I didn't know that when I volunteered to serve.
Yeah, it it changed in the last year and a half, two years.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, so just once again, whatever this body wants, however, again, expressing my interest for the IVDA, at least if I can be an alternate because it is pretty personal for me, just having grown up here right next to the airport.
I appreciate that. I again, I'm just concerned about your confliction working directly there, so.
Well, I mean, but that's something we could check out, right? Whether that would would constitute a conflict of interest or not. I don't know if the city manager wants to weigh in on this or not, or if we would need to check. No, well, I would like to be there too, so I guess we need to have a vote.
I I'm sorry, John, I couldn't understand you.
I said I'm interested in that position too, so we need to have a vote without regard whether there's a conflict or not.
Okay. Okay, so informally, who would support the two primary IVDA being Dr. Riggsby and myself and Dr. Leonard is the alternate?
Me, I.
I would support that also.
I support that.
Okay.
I had that works.
Okay, and the airport with Dr. Riggsby as the primary and me as the alternate?
I I move that.
Anybody else want another one?
Have we voted on on any of these yet?
We're just doing them by consensus.
I think so. I think we we voted. Okay. So where Mr. Chair, where where are we if we go down these? We are terms. We've got Riggsby and and who's the alternate replacing me and SBCTA?
Jindal.
Jindal, okay. And then Omni Transit is Daley and me.
Okay.
IVDA is is Riggsby and Duper with me as the alternate. And now we're on the Airport Authority that I think we're agreeing that it's Duper and Riggsby.
With Riggsby being the primary.
Yeah, Riggsby, I'm sorry, Riggsby primary, yeah. And now we're on to the solid. Well, we have to vote on that again.
Ron, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with that. I just want to be sure our new councilman gets some assignments in here too, so. Well, he's got E and F coming up here.
Yep.
The high a high honor too.
Actually, actually, the water, the water issues can get significant.
Yes. So Solid Waste Management Board?
I'll take that.
Okay, Mr. Jindal, do we have an alternate for this? I don't remember that we did. It might be. I I don't.
Jarb is the alternate. Jarb is the alternate.
That's right. Okay, and what about the Water Board? Mr. Jindal, would you be willing to do that also?
What are the timings for this? So it does not say in the packet of when they meet. I know it's an as needed basis, but what has been the precedent so far?
It's just like that. It's as needed and it's very
Rare.
Yeah, rare. Usually in the evening?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take that one too.
And Jarb, do you back up on this one also?
Yes, I mean, I get a meeting every month.
Okay. All right, on to the Insurance Authority. California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Board.
Who's on that now?
I'm I'm currently on it, I believe.
Sounds like you've served with distinction and should continue.
This is a once a meeting, correct?
Once a year?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And and usually Jarb attends it.
Yes.
Anybody else interested in doing it?
No. You're doing it so well, Phil, but.
Oh, yeah. Okay, all right, I'll I'll take it back on.
And I will happy to be.
Thank you. Okay, and then finally, the Board of Directors for Confire. I have to have to say that in in some of my travels, I spend time speaking with different fire chiefs from around the county. And and Mr. Mike Bell, the Director of Confire, and they all speak very highly and are very proud to have Dr. Riggsby serve on that board. He has been the primary member of Confire for us for a while, and I have served as his alternate. I would be interested in continuing that moving forward if you guys are fine with that.
It's good with me.
Yeah, the I I'm currently the Chair of that board and I am the only continuity on that board because all of the city delegates and county delegates have been replaced in the last year, year and a half, and the continuity is very poor other than for me, so. I'd be definitely willing to continue that.
Sounds like it would be a bit awkward for you to leave at this time.
Yeah, as the Chair.
I'm supportive.
Okay. Any opposition to that? Hearing none, we're gonna move forward. Madam Clerk, did all that make sense or do we need to?
Do we?
It made perfect sense. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And we keep the same alternate, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, moving on to item number four, a public hearing. This is gonna be the second reading and roll call vote for Council Bill oh two zero two zero dash zero two, which was basically the prohibiting discontinuation of residential water service for nonpayment, which was also a directive by the Governor to to everybody in the state, so. Do we need to open up another public hearing? We did have the public hearing last time, but we traditionally usually offer up any other comments for the second reading.
At the last meeting, it was introduced as new as new business, so this is the public hearing, so we do need to open it.
Okay, so opening the public hearing, I don't have the trustee gavel, but that's okay. And Mr. Proctor, if you would pull the audience here and see if we have any takers. Nobody's jumping up. I don't see any messages or hands or anything flying. So we will officially close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion to move this.
I'll move it.
Okay, I have a motion from Dr. Leonard.
Second from Daley.
And Madam Clerk, since we have to do the roll call vote, it's all you.
The motion is to adopt Council Bill oh dash twenty twenty zero two, amending Title thirteen, Chapter thirteen oh four and thirteen oh six of the Municipal Code concerning discontinuation of residential water service. Please say yea or nay when I call your name. Mayor Duper?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Temporee Daley?
Yes.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yay.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Jindal?
Yay.
Thank you. It passes unanimously.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar.
I've reviewed the consent calendar and I'm ready to move it.
What? There must be something on there I can pull off.
I was thinking that.
I will second.
All right, we have a first and a second, I think, for the first time in the history of this group. Madam Clerk, I guess we have to pull this one too.
Yes, we do. Thank you. The the motion is to move the consent calendar, items five through fourteen. Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temporee Daley?
Yes.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Jindal?
Yay.
Thank you. It passes unanimously.
Mayor Duper, this is City Attorney Holdaway. Can you hear me?
Yes.
On the public hearing item, the Council Bill, that was an ordinance and we should have included in the motion the waiver of the reading, read by number and title only. And I was trying to interject myself there before you got to that, but perhaps we could just do a confirming motion to include the waiver and read by number and title only.
Kyle.
Who made the original motion? Do they need to do it?
Leonard made the motion.
Who made the original motion? Or can I just move what you said?
It was Dr. Leonard made the original one. And then Dr. Daley seconded. I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, on the, yeah, that was it.
Do you amend your motion?
Yes, I amend my motion then thusly, as stated by our City Attorney.
And I support the amended motion.
Okay, is that good or do we need to revote?
We should go ahead and revote, just to be clear that that was included.
Madam Clerk, all yours.
It is entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, amending Title thirteen, Chapter thirteen point zero four and thirteen point zero six of the Loma Linda Municipal Code concerning the discontinuation of residential water service for nonpayment. And we will go ahead and vote. Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temporee Daley?
Yes.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Jindal?
Yay.
Thank you. It passes unanimously.
Okay, I muted myself while I was over some paper. Once you mute, so. Don't don't do it. Any old business? None? A new business? None? Reports of councilmen. Seeing then, reports of officers.
Wanted to let you know that the city and staff, we are doing great with this.
Okay, I I've had opportunity to stop by and talk to some of the folks at the city and and I know you guys are doing very, very well as far as all the social distancing and and trying to keep everybody safe and healthy and we appreciate that. So to all the residents, hopefully this will be over soon. We apologize for the inconvenience, but our but our folks are still working just as hard as ever and they're coming to work for you every day, so. It's good. Okay, so we'll adjourn the City Council agenda and Dusty, do we normally, which do you prefer, the successor agency or?
It's whichever one is on top.
All right, well, let's do the successor agency then. I will open the meeting. We've already dispensed with the roll call. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any reports from the public, comments, public participation? Not seeing anybody waving anything. And conflicts of interest and disclosures, I don't believe we have any. But if you do, please speak for them now. I will take a motion on the consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent calendar.
And Dr. Leonard, thank you. Madam Clerk?
I do have one correction to the minutes. On the consent calendar from March ten, the motion indicates that it was made by Mayor Pro Temporee Leonard and seconded by Mayor Pro Temporee Leonard. My error, it should have been seconded by Duper, so I'll make that correction to the minutes. So the the motion will be to to approve the consent calendar with the minutes as as amended. Mayor Duper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Temporee Daley?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Riggsby? And Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, we will adjourn the successor agency and move into our final agenda, the Housing Authority. Moving through all the items, or there is there anything to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move into the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Was that Mr. General?
Riggsby second.
Leonard and Riggsby.
Dr. Leonard with the first and Dr. Riggsby with the second.
Yes.
And Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Okay. Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Mayor Mayor Pro Temporee Daley?
Yes.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
And Councilman Jindal?
Yay.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Any reports of officers? Any chair member reports? Seeing none, we are adjourned with that agenda as well. So this includes our first and hopefully last online city council meeting, unless you guys really I has a look like that, so. Anything else that we should add either from city staff or from our attorney before we close this out?
Not this evening. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and good job, everybody.
Okay, thank you all. Look forward to getting to spend some in person time with you guys real soon, so we'll see you next time.
Good job, Phil.
Bye, everybody.